Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of May 15, 2019. I would like to remind everyone this meeting is being recorded for you set at later date. It is also being broadcast live, so please keep that in mind. I'd ask you to please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Also, would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag? The Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
An entertaining motion to approve the minutes of April 10, 2019.
So move second.
Discussion. All those in favor? In unanimous. An entertaining motion to approve the April 24, 2019.
So move second.
Discussion. All those in favor? An entertaining motion to approve May 1, 2019.
So move second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Okay. Is Mara running late, Michelle?
She's.
She's going to be here?
She's not in there. We're not sure.
She's in with Josh Cutler. She's interning and she was hoping to get, depending on traffic, but she's not optimistic.
We may have a student advisory report. We may not. We also have an award to give Mara, which we may have to drag her to one more meeting after she graduate. Oh, no, actually.
Monday?
We can do it Monday night. Okay.
That's right.
Before we get into the superintendent's report, we have a committee member who's been a four-term member, who's been here 12 years. Lots of times people can't last 12 minutes on certain things, and this guy's been here 12 years. He's been very devoted and committed to the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District, as you can see, to stay 12 years. So it's with great pleasure that I give this track, this plaque, to Bob Trotta. Thank you, Mr. Trotta, for your service. To the staff, and most of all, to me. Many, many things you've taught me along the way.
They were good things.
They were good things. Many things you've taught me along the way have stuck, so I appreciate all that you've done for the district, for the students, and for all the educators, and most of all, I hope you've got something out of it, too.
I did. I certainly did. Thank you very much.
If I could just have a few moments?
Sure.
I did write something up, but I'm not going to redo half of it. But first and foremost, I would like to thank the President Committee. I've enjoyed working with everyone here. I've also enjoyed working with the past school committee members as well, the President Administration, Jeff and George, the past administrations, Dr. McEwen, Dr. Whitner, Christine Suko, and of course, Michelle, who keeps me informed of everything. Nelson Mandela had a quote, and George is a collector of quotes, stated, "Education is the most powerful weapon which can be used to change the world." I would see it more as a tool in the sense of a tool that maybe can spark innovation, a tool that maybe can spark creativity, a tool that can put things together so that everything works together for comprehensive education. I think public schools are probably one of the most important things that we deal with on a daily basis. Everyone is educated. Some enjoy their public school experience, some certainly do not. And being an educator for 35 years and 12 years as a school committee, 47 years, things have changed. The one thing that has not changed is the budget process. Even back when, in 1993, when they had the ed reform, they went to the foundation budget, which hasn't been changed in years. We ran through Prop 2 and 1/2, Question 3, way back when. And at one time, believe it or not, for members who might not know this, school committees actually had fiscal autonomy. They could set their budget and no one could get at it. But over the years, that shrunk, and then it became the battle of the schools versus the town. And in the state we live in now, reading in the paper, I'm a little bit oxymistic as to what the budget process may be. The House and Senate have their versions, and it's up to the governor to decide what he's going to do. But the important thing is to remember how important public education is. And as school committee members, I think that's one thing that we strive to do. We think what to do with the best interest of the students. This last budget process was a difficult one. We lost some staffing, and that hurts a community because I think schools draw people into towns, and it's important to have a strong, a strong public school. So with that in mind, I know you have a few more years left, some of you, some of you may run for reelection again, and I'm hoping that the budget process will be a lot better than it has been in the past, and you'll be able to add things instead of talking about, maybe we can do this, but we definitely can't do that. In closing, I'd also like to give a shout out to the Whitman-Hanson Education Association administrators who have supported me for all these years, and to, most importantly, the townspeople of Whitman who elected me for terms. I didn't think I'd be here for 12 years. Tom Evans talked me into it one evening, and I said, "No, I don't know if I'm going to do that," and he said, "Oh, come on, try it. The meetings only last an hour." That didn't hold true, and here I am 12 years, 12 years later. But again, I'd like to thank everyone in the town of Whitman and everyone in this present board as well. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, Bob. Jeff, would you like to give your report?
Sure. So first up, just as a thank you to both the towns of Whitman and the towns of Hanson for supporting us with an 8.5% increase in our assessment for the 2020 school budget, although it wasn't what we were looking for. I think we had some good discussions, and I'm looking forward to the conversations continuing regarding the fiscal 2021 budget. I have had a conversation briefly with Mr. Linham right after the town meeting, which was an eventful of three, four hours in Whitman. Dog licenses were a hot topic of the evening. And Frank asked myself and members of my team to be part of the strategic plan for the town of Whitman moving forward. I think that's a step forward. We're looking for open lines of communication. I also had a conversation with Mr. Lamontina yesterday, saying he's looking forward to partnering with us as a school committee, as a school district, with members of the Selectment and Finance Committee, so we start the conversation early so we can move forward. We both agreed that this year was very difficult, and we both don't want to go through that again. But I want to thank both communities for supporting us, although it wasn't what we looked for, and we had to make some cuts and difficult decisions. I think the strategic plan that George and I and the leadership team have put together will put us in a good spot for September when we open. You'll see some things different, and I think you'll also see some things, there'll be some people that won't be there, but I think you'll see some positive things as far as math instruction, as far as curriculum alignment and direction, and also social-emotional learning. We haven't forgotten that. So we stuck true to our strategic plan, even though there was some pain. I think we're going to see some growth. That's as far as the town meeting. The one thing that didn't happen, which was, we were hoping to happen in Whitman, was the amended regional agreement that was passed over in the town of Whitman, and there will be further discussions regarding that. That was the last item on the agenda, Article 29, I think.
Yes, sir.
At 11:35 PM, and it was passed by. There was, there was a person in town that questioned it. Rick Anderson from the Finance Committee said the Finance Committee didn't endorse the regional agreement as written, which moved Mr. Linham to move, to pass the article or move past it to.
Table it.
Table it, sorry. So we need, we don't have a signed regional agreement from both communities yet, and I think that's something that we're going to work on this summer. I wasn't privy to writing the amended version, so I'm looking forward to seeing what our issues have come up, and I know there were some funding issues that Whitman had questioned. So we'll dig into that. We did meet with a retired person from DESI, the Chapter 70 guru, Mr. Hatch, which we can bring at some point to the committee or to bring to a subcommittee to work on that amended regional agreement, so we can get something in writing. I know the town of Hanson passed it in 2018, so we're still working under the old regional agreement, which is status quo of what we've been doing for years and years and years. Any questions as far as town meeting or the regional agreement?
Would you like me to report on Hanson while we're talking about that?
Sure may.
The Hanson town meeting did last into the night, probably 11 o'clock, but when it came to the 87 articles that get accepted, it's the first time in 30 years of going to a town meeting that no one held one article. Everything went right through. Now, there was some conversation after the meeting via Facebook friends that talked about, well, we should have said that we were losing people. Anyone that had watched any school committee meetings for the last five or six school committees would understand how many pink slips we handed out and how many teachers and employees we were losing. The assessment was already set. I think I had mentioned at the meetings, once the assessment is set, it cannot go up, it can only go down. The towns had agreed on 8.5, so town meeting probably wasn't the place to see if that could be changed. But we did lose 19.2 employees, not all teachers, with an 8.5 assessment, but it did go relatively smooth in Hanson. There were some school articles on that passed without any problem. There were a couple of things that got passed over, and now we're just waiting, moving forward to see what's going to happen in June.
What I, what I have to add from Whitman, there is an election, well, in both communities, there's an election this weekend, and in Whitman in particular, the capital, our capital items were passed over for another town meeting that was scheduled for June 17, based upon the results of a debt exclusion override or debt exclusion ballot question this Saturday.
In Whitman?
In Whitman, in particular. I believe most of the items, capital items for the regional district and in Hanson were passed without, without issue. So there is an election this weekend in Whitman that pertains to our capital items for the, for the town.
Any questions about either of the town meetings, from anyone? I think everybody was probably at one or the other. Okay, thank you, Jeff.
The 2020 budget, we've, we've talked to our staff, people that, that will not be returning due to the cuts, and we're moving forward from that. The one thing in particular, when you do cut a budget anyway, you will have postings, so when people come to you as members of the school committee and say, "Why are there postings?" Well, we do have to replace people. We're not adding anything to the budget. This isn't an extra to the budget. Everything has been in our budget with the, with the 8.5. That being said, we did restructure some things to make, make things more efficient for our district and more services accessible for our students. So you will see postings throughout the course of May, June, and even in the summer, depending on who leaves and if we have any resignations or retirements or somebody gets pregnant over the summer and can't come back. There will be postings, even though we did cut. But all of our teachers who have status or are part of a RIF have first right to come back, and by contract, it's for three years. But as Bob said, we did also eliminate positions that were outside the Unit A, B, C, and D contracts. So we're moving forward with the 2020 numbers that we have now, with hope that the governor signs some amendments this, this summer and we get some added income that we're not sure of yet. The House budget didn't come out too great. The Senate budget came out better, and hopefully we get somewhere in between. There is legislation out there still around special education, transportation, regional transportation. I did see, Mr. Small sent me some, some articles out there, and there are things published by different state representatives that they're hoping that they move forward with that, that would help us.
Fred?
In piggybacking on that just a little bit, I think our best hope is for an increased minimum per pupil aid. There are a couple of different variations out there. One is Senator Brady, who's on Senate Ways and Means at $50. There's another one out there at $100 for amendments for minimum aid, so either of those two, generally the $100 would be better.
Yeah.
Senator Brady's office has indicated a willingness to sign on to that as well. I've spoken with them. There's four different regional transportation amendments, most of them out of Senator Tar, for 85, 90, and 95% reimbursement, and then Senator Goby, I believe, is in Ferguson, are in for 100%.
Yep.
So, you know, if we saw movement on that, you know, that would be something that, you know, could spur an awful lot of conversation. There's also probably going to be an FY19 supplemental that is going to be coming out in the next couple of weeks. That's going to be pretty much all pork. Already in the process through Senator Brady's office, I've spoken to Sullivan's office and Cutler's office, of getting everybody together so we can look for some earmarks as to what our needs are. So regardless of what happens with Whitman, et cetera, if we have some capital needs or whatnot, that would be the start of a conversation, or perhaps we can get some money pretty darn quickly for some things. Also, to start the conversation for the table, for an earmark for next year for Full Day K, for the implementation. So if we can get the funding out of the state to start the program and then we are able to sustain it within our budget, that would be one way that we can be able to get the program that we most desperately desire, so to speak.
One of the things that we're still waiting for is, we applied for a grant for safety security for the thumb locks in the town of Whitman. We're still waiting to hear. It's a $65,000 grant.
55 or 65?
60.
And we're waiting to hear. We were supposed to hear three weeks ago.
This week, I'm told. I was told last week that they're supposed to be releasing it this week, and they were supposed to do it the week before, so.
By graduation, I hope, you know, for 2020. Any questions about 2020 budget?
Jeff, this isn't, I'm sorry. This isn't a question, but I'm on that same site that Fred's on and see a lot from Mr. Walter. The other thing was, your counterpart, Menden Upson, did a presentation on regional transportation, and it's, it, it's really good. I think he presented it to a special commission on improving student transportation. And, you know, he pulled in everything, and I, I'm sure you and George gave plenty of feedback because it sounded like he pulled from a lot of folks throughout the Commonwealth. But that was something else that was big and insightful to see as well.
One of the big pushes through our association is special education transportation, you know, and trying to wrap that into either a separate line item or through circuit breaker. And there is movement this year. This is the first time there's been movement, and there's really, there's some discussion. But as Mr. Cutler said at one point, the pie is so big, who gets a piece of the pie? But that has to be included because we are, as every district in the Commonwealth is getting hit with, special education transportation with zero reimbursement. In your packet is a handout on the FY19 expenditures. I'd ask you to read through that and email Christine or myself any questions. Christine's at Masbo today, and I don't want to misrepresent numbers that I'm not familiar with every, I don't do this every day. So email her. We are still short in special education to the tune of about $760,000, something that we know of, and there's justifications. I mean, we go from a non-residential to a residential placement or a few students move in. But please look through those documents, and if you have any question, either give me a call or email Christine. She will be back by the end of the week.
Fred, do you have a question?
Well, I did have something, you know, sort of focuses and touches upon the 2020 budget, but it's more looking ahead as we're finishing up 2020 and we're getting together a committee that's going to be working on the 2021. Hopefully, we're going to be starting our work within the next couple of weeks to prepare for an override. You know, just some thoughts and a few things that I had, you know, going back from the 2020 era. The budget book that we used to get, which was very thick and would take hours and hours of a presentation, while a lot of people are requesting that type of information to be easily accessible from our website, I don't know that it's necessary at our budget presentation. I thought that the summary was good, but to have a simple area where someone could click on budget.
Yes.
Be able to have.
On the website?
On the website.
Yeah.
Be able to have that 200 pages that shows everything broken down completely in the manner of full transparency, so to speak. Year-over-year numbers increases. That gives the public, I think, a really, really good idea of what we're facing, and it gives them information that they say, geez, it's not there. It was there prior to last year, you know, and I realize new administration coming in, et cetera. But if we could restore that type of information and have it easily available, and if we can get to work on our fall override ASAP, as I think as George said, you know, we can pretty much map out what our budget's going to be the next year as far as fixed costs. You know, we know what our fixed costs, you know, are going up. You know, we can start and then we compare it with our strategic plan, see what programs we're going to ask the public to bring back so that we can take this district and replace what we've lost, and then take a few steps forward and start doing the job that we should be doing.
George and Jeff and I met, so the committee will know soon as this has been brought forward, and we talked about bringing the book back, the big pages, and then having a meeting as we used to do during the John McEwen era with the Selectment, the Finance Committees, all the principals. We used to do a four-hour meeting on a Saturday, go line by line, and also invite the public, say, "This is the book." Because part of what happened this year is we had a lot of people saying the book was so long that the big dick binder, they couldn't understand it. So we simplified it this year. These guys simplified it so people could understand it better, and people said, "Oh, we wish we had more information." So it was a little bit difficult, so we're tossing that. We'll be bringing you that back to the committee. We're not totally fixed on how it's going to work yet, but we have discussed it a little bit, so we'll be bringing that forward.
Then next year will be like we're doing with that one now.
So we're willing to do anything the committee wants us to do. The one thing that was not transparent on our website, and I don't know, we're trying to dig into that, was everything wasn't posted on our website. And you could find, you could find things, but there is a line in the, in the top toolbar that says budget, and it went to 2016. Now, we are, this could be an issue because we're transferring to a different website in July. So I don't know if data was moved around during this time, but I'll give people anything that they want. We'll do line by line. We'll sit here for, for meetings. We'll meet with the six people that show up for a four-hour meeting, and we'll do that. I still, throughout the, I'll meet anybody for coffee anywhere in town, and I'm willing to do that and go through salary lines and where we are and where we want to be. But as, as directed by the committee, I'll give you as much information. We'll post it anywhere we want it to be. I know one of the questions was the item, line item by line, and we had presented that to this committee, and we did do that in a public meeting, line by line, with questions and answers. That, I don't think, ever made it to the website, and again, my, my issue, I'll fix that, but I still want to keep something simplified so that the person who doesn't understand semantics of a budget can understand where we're going ebb and flow. And on that comment, too, Fred, one of the things I talked to Christine about was, I'd like to bring to this committee, when we talk about, we went for a 16.4 increase in the assessment, much of which because our revenue was down $500,000 because we used E and D money. As soon as this committee decided to use E and D money, we went to a 12.5% assessment. I think that's confusing to the public. So I think we need to be clearer in what the assessment is and what the numbers are within the assessment so that it doesn't look, wow, you guys went from 16.5 to 12, but it was just because we used E and D, and we've used that so much over time that it's just been built into the budget. So we'll bring that to you come the new school year as we start preparing the 2021 budget because our intent is to have those numbers by October anyway as we start these conversations, and hopefully it won't be new because both town administrators have assured us that they want to meet over the summer, and I know where their offices are. And I think different people from the school committee and different people from the leadership team can, can do that. As we prepare for the override, and the one thing I caution people about, people are already starting to throw around numbers for an override. This team hasn't come up with anything to present to you as far as an override yet. We haven't presented numbers on Full Day K for 2021. We haven't presented any other numbers yet, but people have asked me, oh, this is the number, this is the number. This has not come. You folks will get it first so that you know where we're moving forward to.
Bob?
Getting back to those Saturday meetings, I never particularly cared for those personally.
Yeah.
I felt as though that the budget book, I think the way that Jeff and George did it, streamlined it, and it was much easier to follow. I think all the pertinent information was there. Sitting through four hours, three hours of that meeting, I didn't get any more out of it. I got more out of what was presented in that, I guess, mini version compared to what people look for. I think the important thing is, is that you get the Selectment and town managers at a meeting prior to the formal presentation of the budget, so they have an idea of what goes on. I don't know if anyone else felt that way, but I don't see that booklet giving people any more information than if they called, asked somebody, or if it maybe was put online as opposed to creating that huge volume of information and information and information, which I think what people really want to look at is, what's the budget? How many, how many teachers we have? I probably, what do teachers get paid? What's the line items we spend money on as opposed to the philosophy and the setup and the design? I think you can find that anywhere, but I'm not going to be here, so if you want that meeting, go ahead.
So first, let me, I'm going to miss this. Because I'm looking at your, the synergy, man. The synergy, Bob. You said, you said exactly what I was going to say. You always do. I'm going to miss that. I'm good. You know, put it online. Absolutely. Because I'm assuming that's just take the pages, scan them in or whatever, and then anybody can look it up online. Absolutely. I mean, I used to go to those four-hour meetings before I was on school committee, especially during budget crises, you know, in the town of Hanson, just to know. This one here, and I've said it to, to Mr. Farrell, Mr. Simonak, a multitude of times this year, this was the easiest one for me to be able to explain to coworkers, to other people in town, that I could actually understand all of what I was looking at. You know, if, if the Selectment and the FINCOM want the four-hour meeting, then absolutely we'll do the four-hour meeting with them. We'll give them the big binders if that's what they want. If they want just a little bit more information than what was on there, okay, that was, for me, very simple to explain to people. But I'm okay with whatever information they want, absolutely give it to them. And like you brought up, they want it online. That's easy enough. Put it online. They click on it. They can read it. They can print out it if they want to. The four-hour meeting, if the towns want it, by all means, we can do it. I don't know if, and again, I don't know because I haven't talked to them. I don't know if that's what they're looking for or not, but I thought this was very easy to explain to people, and I understood it better than I have in the previous eight years, so.
Same with me.
Fred?
Based upon the phone calls that I did receive, you know, not a heck of a lot, but probably about 15, you know, people saying, "How come we switched? How come we switched? Did you see this Facebook page? You know, people are referencing." And you get those types of phone calls. Not saying we have to sit there and go line by line to the public, but for them to have access to it online, I just think that it shows the transparency. You know, and someone said to me, "Well, you know how you find out the salaries of the school department?" And I said, "Well, I know we provide them to the towns." You know, and, "Well, it's not in the Whitman book." And I happened to look, and sure enough, it wasn't. But if you go to Hanson, it's in the Hanson book. You know? How come you guys don't publish yet? Geez, maybe we should, you know? We're providing the information, it gets published anyways. You know, maybe we put it in the back there. I don't think we have anything to hide, you know, as far as that goes.
Well, I did have one particular person tell me that after this process was over that one of our employees got a $30,000 raise. And I said, "That's totally 100% incorrect," and I straightened it out immediately. So I'm going to even take a further leap for anybody who's watching. If you have a budget concern, if you have a question on someone's payroll, if you have any type of questions, my cell number is 617-538-0189. Please call me. I will get you an answer within 24 hours. Stay off the rumor mill. Stay off the internet. If you want true and accurate answers, we will bring you right into this building and show you everything. It's all public records. Again, my number is 617-538-0189, and if you don't know, I'm Bob Hayes, so call me. I have no issues with answering any of your questions. And as the superintendent said, call the district. The number is 781-618-7020, and someone will answer, and Mr. Simonak or Mr. Farrell or Michelle will give you any information. There is nothing that is hidden. I see that all the time, that. I see that all the time, that, you know, I hear it, this is hidden, that's hidden, it's public documents, we're glad to give them for you. There is no charge, as some people say, you know, the Freedom of Information Act, somebody wants a charge, we're doing it for free. We want it to be transparent, so please call. Somebody, Dan?
Yeah, along the lines, some people already said, you know, the website, when I went through it, that's the complaint I had, there's no information, information was useless because it's from way back when. Um, the book, I do agree, we should have that Saturday meeting for one reason. Um, you all know the processes, you know how to read the book, there's some FIMCOM people that don't know how to do that, there's some selectmen that don't know how to do that. It's our job to show them, this is how everything lines up. And, um, maybe they'll start learning, like we keep talking about, the assessment, what an assessment is, it's not an increase, it's an assessment, it's due to the school system from the towns. That's what the assessment is. And people, they really have to learn these terminologies and what they really are, except for, keep off Facebook too, I mean, that's where you get all the dis- misinformation.
So I was just gonna throw, maybe that's something we put on the website, is, because people, most people don't understand the difference between the assessment and what the budget increases, because they hear 8.5%, the budget's going up 8.5%. The way that I try to explain to people, roughly, rough numbers, the state pays 50% of the budget, Whitman then pays 30%, Hanson then pays 20%. So the assessment's based off of Hanson, 20%, not the overall budget. Maybe that's what we do on the website is.
Yeah.
Simple terms, just so that people can click and look and go, oh.
Yeah, at 12.5%, they think that's an increase. It's like, no, that was only four-point or five-point increase in the budget, it's not the overall, so.
Chris?
Could it be as simple as just like a frequently asked question, like TAB or something, relative to the budget, and try to dispel some concerns or, you know?
I think as we, as we roll out the new website, which also has an app for your phone, so budget, things can go right there. What we did this year was really, we weren't happy with Final Site, which is our website provider, we went with School Messenger, which is our, our communications provider, and they have a website, cost-effective with an app, and we have someone who's going to be working with that. So it's cleaner, because it's a central office application now, versus, uh, it's going to be out of tech, but it's a central office type thing. So as much, as you folks get feedback too, we'll take that feedback and, and try to fix it as we go. The assumption sometimes is, when it goes up, or we give a directive and it goes out, it's done. If somebody clicks on it, and my dad's one, he's retired, he clicks on our website every now and then, he'll find my misspellings on things, and I hear about it. So he just didn't happen to click on the budget. Now, I didn't see the budget, the thing online until recently, and I think somebody in my office said, I didn't realize there was a, a budget icon up there, there hadn't been before on our district website. So that's why we're, we're blowing it up, and we'll, we'll do as much as we can. Again, as, as much information as we can provide, this committee gives us what you need, and we'll provide it for you.
I think also, when you see the post-July 1st, um, turnover to the new website, it is much cleaner, it is much more uniform from a district level to a school level. There are icons that are at the bottom for the five things that every department or that every school will have, and the, the goal is to make it user-friendly. After 16 years, Final Site is still not a user-friendly piece for me, because it's so difficult to find everything, because so many things are buried somewhere else. So one of the goals, one of the tasks of the team that's putting this together, is to say, how do we make it even, um, cleaner and more streamlined? Another feature of the website that you'll see, yes, is the built-in app that'll go with it, but every message that you receive from a School Messenger that you get is the same now system. So that message will go out on the website, on the app, and then through SIMs or through email the same way. And this will be at no-cost increase this year, and there'll be a savings next year when we move forward, because our Final Site contract was high and it is due. It was, excuse me, it's expiring, so we just moved on to a new one.
Thank you. Next are superintendent goals, so what I did was I copied my goals for you in expectation to help you out as you prepare your evaluation for me for next month. The last two pages, three pages, are things that I saw as evidence of accomplishment. You can, you have a month to read through these in preparation of the evaluation, and I took some feedback on how we prepare goals for next year, I'll try to make it more simplified, um, and more user-friendly for the committee. It's been an interesting year this year, uh, I think we've done a lot of positive things, I think we've gone through some, uh, some crises that we were able to manage. Hopefully, um, you'll see, and what I see is evidence of accomplishment, that we're moving the district forward. Um, then, any questions? Sorry.
Keep in mind, superintendent just told us the evaluation is coming up. We actually did an evaluation information session that the state is putting together, and Jeff and I were on camera showing about how the new evaluation tool has obviously changed over the 26 questions that the evaluation used to be, and reported on it of how it's working, what's working, what isn't. Because tremendous amounts of school committees in the state don't even evaluate their superintendents, because the evaluation process is so cumbersome. So if you have a CEO of a company, which the superintendent more or less is, and you're not evaluating, you ha- you could have issues and not even understand that you have issues. So the simplified system will be coming up and currently using what we have now, and probably will be for a few years, but that's going to be happening in the next month. So take a look at this, if you have any questions, we'll talk about it at the next meeting.
Um, the North River Collaborative Report, uh, the collaborative included, uh, the town of Stoughton, as far as the collaborative, that's the report that I have as we move forward. Um, I have a meeting with the board of directors next week about the director's evaluation as a board member. That's all I have, superintendent's report.
Any questions? Fred?
Uh, have we made any progress in, I was, I was just having an idea, I know we're trying to keep as many students in district as possible on sped, I don't know if we've been able to identify for next year, uh, the creation of any classes, and would it be worthwhile, and you may have already done this, reaching out to some of the local area, uh, East Bridgewater, Abington, seeing if we can find students that are in like need of services, that we can perhaps fill a class, or, you know, maybe five children, but be more cost-effective and to actually tuition in.
So, so on that note, if we move into unfinished business, I don't know if you want to move to the recommendation, um-
Go ahead.
-of Director of Student Services, uh, my recommendation is to, for this committee to appoint Lauren Matheson as the new Director of Student Services for the district. Partly, in fact, that we are developed, we have developed a classroom in the town of Hanson as a language-based program that we will have for our own students to keep them in district, and then as it's established, reach out to local communities who don't have that program to try to tuition them in. Something that we've had in the district in the past, um, and had to cut through attrition through people. So Lauren has been instrumental in putting that together. We also have a vision to do that, this is a, a middle school language-based program, we have a vision to look at it as a K to four language-based program, and we will continue, or she will continue, to look for opportunities to bring as many of our students back from collaboratives, back from, from other private schools for special education. I don't think we will ever accomplish getting a residential student back, I never say never, but those students require some services that we will never be able to provide in a public school setting. She's also looking at, at other ways to bring students in tuition-wise. East Bridgewater is a smaller community, Abington's a smaller community, they might add, West Bridgewater is a smaller community. We have tuitioned students in the past for some of our existing programs from, out from other districts. Lauren has been, and I think will continue to be instrumental in filling that. On that note as well, Lauren took over a pretty challenging department. Fiscally, still challenged, but Lauren is making strides to make sure we're in a better spot. Communication with her staff has been wonderful. Um, she actually works with our CPAC, and our CPAC numbers have grown, and the CPAC president really speaks highly of Lauren herself. Um, I think Lauren is going to move our district forward, not only for special education, but for ELL students, students that are homeless, Lauren will be all encompassing of student services. So I'd like to recommend Lauren Matheson for appointment, uh, for effect immediately.
Second.
Lauren, good evening, would you like to get up and, uh, say a few words? Maybe take some questions if we have anyone from the committee before we move to the vote? Thank you for coming this evening and, and welcome.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for me?
If you look in your packet, she has several letters and, and several recommendations. Lauren has been on board with us for quite some time already in this position and has made some tremendous strides in moving forward to do things that Fred just mentioned, you know, trying to get this, this department together, she took over a somewhat difficult situation, as the superintendent just told you, and she's been making, uh, a lot of positive moves on, on that position, so, thank you. Questions, anyone? Fred?
I'll just say that, uh, anyone that I've spoken to, uh, cannot speak highly enough of you. Uh, if you look at your letters of recommendation, Dr. Quealy, who was here for many years and someone that I very much respect, uh, you know, can't recommend you any higher than he did in paper, I'm wholeheartedly 110% for you coming and being named permanent.
Thank you, Fred, I appreciate that.
Mr. Boyce?
And Lauren, you know me, being with the Pilgrim Area Collaborative-
Yes.
Uh, this first year with Dipna was really our main focus, and what a joy she's been, but, you know, everything that you've done for us in this early capacity, so well appreciated. Um, you know, e- even as we went around the schools, we, we saw different caveats of your, your work and so forth, and it was just wonderful to see. Um, but I did notice as I was reading your, um, uh, reading through your resume, the, University of Maryland-
Yes.
And knowing that Archives Two is right up the street, so I see we have another thing in common.
All right.
They didn't call me down there last week, but however, however, no, I'm glad, I was so happy to see that. It, it's always the tangibles that really kind of bring you in more focus and, and, the jobs you do and the, the things you accomplish, so.
Thank you, I have a lot of support, I have a great administrative team, I have Lisa Forbes, who I can't thank enough, who's helped with the transition, like Jeff has said, coming in, in the middle of a difficult year, there's, the learning curve has been steep, but I've had a lot of help, um, and I love what I do, so.
Lisa Forbes is fabulous.
She is.
She's been with us, she is a fabulous employee, and she's that woman that's kind of hidden away, that no one sees, but she is fabulous in what she does. Dan?
Lauren, can you just, um, one thing here, the B R Y T?
Yes, the Bright Program. Yeah, so we, um, developed that, this, I believe we're finishing our third year, it's at the high school. It's actually not a special education program, it's a program for every student at the high school, and it's, it was designed really, um, when, when John was the director, and he, he noticed that he was signing a lot of tutoring forms, um, over and over again for the same kids who were going out, being hospitalized and coming back, and coming back to a full set of classes and, you know, maybe a once-a-week touch base with a counselor, but that's not enough after you've come back from a hospitalization. The parents needed support, the students needed support. So we worked together to develop the program, um, we borrowed it from Brookline, who started the program probably 15 years ago now, and now they have a full-time team that just goes around replicating the program in Massachusetts. So we were early to get on board, we're actually part of the team now that goes out and helps other schools who are developing, developing bright programs. Um, we'll have other schools come tour the program and ask questions as they try to figure out how to get that in their budget. But as for any student who's been out for at least five consecutive days, it could be because of a psychiatric hospitalization, it could be for medical reasons, we've had kids that have concussions, we've had kids in car accidents that have used it, um, and, and it's a program with social emotional support and academic support, recognizing that when you've been out of school for a long time, it's a challenge to come back, it's a challenge to come back academically, it's a challenge to explain to your friends where you've been, um, and so we provide that support based on the individual students' needs and get them back, um, to their full schedule. My goal is to see a bright program at both middle schools, because I see the need now, unfortunately creeping into the younger, younger levels of needing that kind of support.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Lauren, before we move to the vote? I have a motion to second, all those in favor? Welcome aboard a train that you're already aboard. Let's go on school update. I actually, the superintendent, I actually was there the other day on, uh, Sunday and rode around, obviously it's all boarded up. Ernie has been moving forward with getting stuff out of the building, I know that, uh-
Yeah, so, so June 30th is coming up quick, and, and George and I took a tour about two and a half weeks ago and texted Ernie and said, what's going on? Because the building was packed of stuff. Um, the past two weeks, the monumental cleaning out of that building is over, it's overwhelming, they did, they've done a lot of work. Um, the building will be ready, returned over on June 30th to the town of Hanson, and good luck to the town of Hanson.
On that note, I was actually in the building, and there are yearbooks that are brand-new, stacks of different years. If anyone that's watching or listening may request a yearbook, we would be glad, I know that we are going to be donating some yearbooks to the Dire Library in Abington, because Abington and Whitman were all part of one town at one point, and they have this big historical thing going on, so when I saw it on the internet, I told them that we had yearbooks available, but we have stacks of them. So if anyone would request a yearbook, rather than dispose of them, we would be more than happy to donate them. So keep that in mind, if you need one, call the high school, or if you need one, I already gave my cell number out, have at it, call me, and, uh, we'll get, we'll get you to it. Any questions about McQuan? It is all boarded up and it's very secure, and it actually, you know, you, you board up a building, you think of it as, yeah, they did a nice show.
Really did, really nice show.
I mean, the playground out back is still there, you know, you're behind the school, it's, but it's still there.
Smoke alarms still work, we had a worker hit it the other day, fire responded.
Yeah, I know all about them. But I will say, they've done, I was there 24 hours before, it's amazing what they can do in-
Yeah, it is amazing.
Cleaning out, that cafeteria is empty now.
There's a dump to the area.
Yeah.
So.
It's amazing what they've done.
Okay. In your packet, you have the 2019-20 calendar, 2019, 2020. We need to vote on it, as is in your packet. An entertaining motion to accept?
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
Have there been any changes since the last time we reviewed it?
We added, um, the, uh, early release days, I think we added grading days, just things pertaining to the school day, nothing as far as a shift in day offer, no.
July 4th is July 4th.
July 4th is July 1st, not July 1st.
We were celebrating the fiscal year.
Last day of school is always a big deal, it's June 12th, 2020. Everybody seems to, if, if we don't have any issues.
Yep.
Any other questions on the calendar before we move to the vote? All those in favor? Thank you. Okay, Driver Ed- Driver Education Rate Increase Proposal, in your packet you will see, they're proposing increasing, the complete program currently is $645, they're proposing an increase to 700. The road test appointment is 125, they're proposing an increase of one to 150. So it's going to be a $55 increase on the program itself, and a $25 road test appointment increase. So if you, if you add it up, it's a total increase of $80. You missing in your packet, Fred?
No, no, but I did have some questions, I mean, I'm looking for in the packet, but I read it on, at home. Are we replacing a vehicle? What type of a program are we utilizing for a vehicle? In other words, are we just buying a vehicle and putting it into service, or are we asking a local business perhaps?
I don't believe we've asked for a local business. The, the program that, that Cliff isn't, inherited was in debt, so he's trying to recover a little bit of money so that we can keep the vehicle that we have serviceable. I, I believe this, I don't know when we purchased the, the 2013 Chevy Cruze, but I, I believe that is coming to end of life because of, of where we're at. We haven't solicited, or at least I haven't solicited, I don't know if Christine or Cliff has solicited a local vendor to see what they could do to help us out there.
Okay. Uh, I know I did, uh, have conversation, uh, the folks over at McLaughlin, I mean, I know, as Bob does, most of the dealers around, uh, I did have conversation with their sales manager to ask if there were any programs, et cetera. Uh, there is a quote-unquote additional rebate that we'd be entitled to, uh, but there's also a program that he's looking into, uh, very similar to how a- to how a loaner program works for dealership, where they put a vehicle on, they can run it up to about 7,500 miles, and then they can take it off, but they can still have the benefit of all the new car programs, et cetera, and what they do is it gets depreciated down. How a program like that would work for municipality and for us is still unknown. There is a reporting code that you can sell a vehicle and deliver it out utilizing that code, but he can't find any information through Chevrolet on the program. He has a phone call out to his representative to find out, and he said it could take a couple days, could take a week before he hears back from her. You know, so I just called to try and get a little bit of the information.
Anything that people can, and I'm sure, you know, and people have talked about donations, if anybody wanted to donate, I'm sure this committee would accept that donation from a local establishment to help us out.
Absolutely.
I'd be more than willing to donate a white Volvo.
Mark Delfron?
I'm not jacking with the owner.
I just want to make a motion to, to accept the proposed increase to 700 and 150 for discussion purposes.
Second.
Do we have the revolving account? Do we know where things stand with it, and how it's performed over the past?
Cliff has done a nice job of increasing.
Yep.
But it's been slow.
Still in the negative.
We're still in the black, we're still in the red. But we are increasing because he's increasing services. We never used to run programs during vacation week, Cliff is running programs during vacation week. Our chief, I mean, one of the things is we're losing folks to our private, because they've run vacation week and summer programs. We haven't done that, and this is Cliff's first year. We are still in the red. Our hope is to be out of the red by next fiscal year.
Can we maybe get Christine to put together a report, Jeff, to bring back to the committee?
Yeah.
I just...
Chris?
Just a quick question. So I see the Silver Lake cost is way low, and it's only open to Silver Lake students, so just, I don't know our program, sorry.
We're open to anyone.
Give me a few more years.
We're open to anyone.
So it's open to anyone? And so, with some of these other entities, the privates, they seem to be higher priced. Have you ever considered doing a higher price if you're not a student, to help subsidize some of that cost versus a student? Does that matter? Have you thought about it? Pros, cons?
That would be, we've done that for summer school, we've done that for evening school when we used to charge. That could be a potential as well, bring to this committee, saying if you're a non-resident, it's $50 more versus a resident student.
Which is more in line with some of those private schools.
Correct.
So, okay.
Ellen?
I thought, so I sent, signed my daughter up for driver's ed, she did it over vacation, it was fabulous. She's still doing her driver's, driving hours, and she's loving it. He's doing a great job. So I was thrilled it was available over vacation. But I think we already charge a difference for non-Whitman-Hanson residents. It's only a small increase. I think I'm pretty sure I remember seeing that, because I know that was in effect when I did driver's ed a million years ago. But that was one of, like, I looked around, and, because I have AAA, and I was shocked at how much it costs for a job through AAA, and I think even just increasing it to 700 is still a bargain.
What we can do is provide you the financials. The one reason, and Christine's not here, and I said, "Here, put it on," because we also want to run something in June, and we don't have a committee meeting until, now we have Monday, but we already have the agenda out for Monday. So, we can get you as many of the financials as there are, but we're looking for that amendment or that increase for the summer program as we go forward.
Anyone else? I have a motion in the second on a rate increase of, from $645 to $700, which is a $55 increase on the complete program, and a $25 increase on the road test appointment, a total of an $80 increase in the program.
Do you want me to just, an amendment to short-term this and come back and, just to get it through for the summer program?
Whatever the committee feels.
I mean, I know myself, you know, until seeing the numbers, you know, we want something to run, you know, at a cost-neutral basis, I would think, for our kids, you know, not to end up making quote-unquote a profit. So I just wanted, feel comfortable with all the numbers possible. That sort of, do we have any provisions for hardships?
For driver's ed, that's a challenge. I mean, we're least likely to turn someone away, but we do have payment plans. The thing is, driver's ed is, it's not a mandatory, it's not a school-based, it's not part of the school curriculum. We do a lot for our athletes, or for a student in an extracurricular, where we try to do that because it's part of the school. This is, some districts don't offer this as part of the school, it's, you go somewhere else. So for me, as a superintendent, this is a bonus for our children, that they can come right here. So yes, as far as financial hardship, there'll be a payment plan, you don't have to pay for it upfront, but there's no real waiver for expense.
Mr. Colley, are you suggesting that we table this until we get all the figures?
If we have to. I mean, if, you know, we're trying to do something for the summer, we can make a temporary one and revisit it for the next session, but, you know.
Well, I was just gonna, I don't, for me personally, I don't want to table it, now I'm paying more money for my son, looking at this, but that is because when I signed him up, as soon as school gets out one of the private ones, runs one that week, you literally have to sign your kid up like in February for, to be able to get it done in the four and a half, five days, whatever it is they do. At the time, the school didn't have that. I would, I mean, I'm okay revisiting it, but I don't want to push this off until September. I'm okay if in September we revisit it, but...
No, what about our June meeting?
Huh?
Our June meeting?
The thing is, though, is I'm sure they got kids that want to sign up now, because otherwise they're gonna, my point is, they're gonna go to the private companies, because school's out in less than a month, and kids have already signed up for summer programs, so.
How about?
I'm okay revisiting.
We'll vote it, and we'll revisit it. Is that good, are you okay with that?
No.
Yeah, go ahead.
How many students are we talking about taking the class over the course of the summer?
That I don't know, because we haven't had great attendance. So we're hoping that it blows out of the water. We've lost students to South Shore the past four continuous, past summers. So I don't know what, I look at my sophomores who have to take it, there are 300 sophomores in this building. Some will come here, some will go to private. He's hoping for some good numbers to get us out of that red over the summer, because we haven't had a successful summer program.
Mr. Gerda?
I think we should go ahead and vote for it, and if something comes up in the meantime, you can always revote it, but it sounds like to me, like it's an important thing to get done, so that the students can get their driver education and get rolling, and I think it bothers me sometimes if you keep, "Put it off, put it off, put it off," you're gonna lose the opportunity to work things out. So I would be in favor of passing it this evening. If it has to be revisited, you can revisit it later.
Ellen?
I was basically gonna say the same thing. We, it would, you'd be hard-pressed to figure out how many students would want to enroll in a program that we can't even really advertise yet, because it's not offered. But I think it would just be foolish of us to not vote on it tonight, when you could potentially have all this time to put a little flyer together telling kids, "Hey, guess what, we're gonna be offering this program this summer." And speaking from personal experience, when I signed my daughter up, I think it was February vacation, maybe, even going up to $700 is quite a savings. I mean, it's a lot of money to have to pay for that, so.
But I just want to clarify what we're voting on.
We're voting on the increase.
We're voting on an increase, correct, not to do the program. So if we don't vote on the increase, aren't we just leaving the program?
Program stays as is, correct.
Okay, so we're not...
We're running the program.
So we're either gonna vote to change it to 700 and 150, or we're gonna leave it at 645 and 125.
Correct.
Right, okay.
645 is in the red.
Just clarify, so we have not had great attendance for the summer programs?
Correct. We haven't had, we haven't had great attendance for driver's ed.
Correct. So, if we raise the cost, theoretically it could be a barrier.
We haven't had great attendance because of opportunity, not necessarily for desire.
But if we, if we don't change the cost, the opportunity still remains the same.
Correct.
The only thing is, people will know that it's possibly going up in the very near future.
Potentially. We're looking at this as Christine looks at it and Cliff looks at it as sustainability, because the program was almost cut last year.
We stay further behind at the lower rate.
I was gonna cut the program in October, because we were so far in the red. Cliff has done a nice job of moving it forward, and I think because of opportunity, the previous director didn't offer that opportunity, either because of classroom instructor, which, those are hard to find. Cliff has been able to find those instructors for both the classroom during vacation weeks, and the summer, as well as driving hours. So he's looking for to be equitable with the privates, who people tend to gravitate towards, because they offer more opportunity. So I think there's a desire there, but we've been negligent in our direction as far as opportunity.
So please revamp the program.
Absolutely correct. And now we're looking at making sure that we have enough money to have a car, you know, because that's, other districts don't offer the, they offer the class, but they don't offer the driving hour. So some parents are split between classroom opportunity, and then finding another company to do driving hours.
And I will say this, the ability, because my children just went through this, the ability to have the car with the handbrake and practice in that car, and then use that car in the road test, is very, very attractive in this day and age. Let people have your brake on the floor. You need to have the handbrake in the car, you know, so those things are very advantageous for kids.
Okay, so the motion in the second is to raise it from 645 to 700 for a complete program, and to raise the road test appointment from 125 to 150 to keep this program sustainable. Any other questions, Mr. Colley?
Does there have to be a date for the, as to when it becomes in effect? I mean, myself, my personal preference would be, you know, A, I would like some more information, but B, to give more lead time than just the five or six weeks. You know, that if we're gonna be running this in the summer, maybe people have already made plans and think that the cost is X dollars, and now it's gonna be Y. To give it a longer period, and perhaps with the looming factor that the rates were going to be going up, say, in September or in the fall, it may push people to get it done quicker.
Well, I think you can't think in ifs. I think what needs to be done is vote it, see what happens.
I don't, what do we know that the vehicle needs to be replaced or repaired? Do we know what, how much we need to spend on it?
Can we just move to the vote? I mean, we're gonna beat this down.
Well, I just, I just don't think we have enough information.
Oh, yes, oh, no. Vote to the vote. That's all.
Okay, so, does everybody understand what this vote is?
Yes.
Yes, okay. If you vote, all those in favor will be voting for the increase in the program. All those in favor of this, of the motion, of the increases. All those opposed? All those not voting, staying.
Staying.
You guys got me all riled up over 40 or 50. Okay, did you get it, Michelle?
I know.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have a job description in your packet.
All right, take that.
Yeah, George can explain the three job descriptions.
So you have, none of these are brand-new job descriptions that you're gonna be looking at today. If I could call your attention to one, the two labeled Secondary Curriculum Chair, Subject-Specific Elementary Curriculum Coordinator. If you would look on the backs of those, it says this is adapted from the approved by Whitman-Hanson Regional School District School Committee on June 10, 2015. So those are the ones you have. Now, it's adapted from your approval, because in June of 2015, it was a combined piece, with the restructuring that we had of Unit B, and the restructuring of our curriculum coordinators, and the restructuring not only of their job positions and responsibilities, but of the resulting salaries, we were able to flesh these out and make these separate. So if you look at the Secondary Curriculum Chair, those are the people that you know, those are the Mark Stefanskis, the Amy Flex, the Brian Seeligs, they will now be six to 12 Secondary Curriculum Chair. The responsibilities from the original one you had stay the same, except it's not pre-K to 12, it's six to 12. If you look at the Elementary Curriculum Coordinator...
Just, can I interrupt for one second, Judge? I have to vote them one at a time.
Okay, so if you look at this, you want to take the secondary one?
The first one, the one that you just...
Secondary Curriculum Chair, the biggest change you had from the original one that you voted on in 2015, was that, that was pre-K to 12, subject-specific. This is now gonna be six to 12, subject-specific.
I entertain a motion to accept as written in your packet, so we move to the discussion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Mike?
So I guess, so we have how many curriculum coordinators?
We will have curriculum coordinators, five.
Five.
Six if you count the foreign language piece.
Curriculum chairs.
Okay, chairs is what we're saying now, okay. So, one distinctively be pre-K through six, I guess I'm...
One would be, one would be pre-K through five, or elementary, and then the rest would be secondary, six to 12.
And that would be everything, or that would be, pre-K through five would be all language, would be...
Yeah, it would be all of the elementary curriculum. And the feeling is that, that's what most schools do, that's what most school districts do, and we adopted, most teachers at the elementary school are multi-subject, therefore, our thought in restructuring is to make that position a multi-subject one.
And do we know who that person is?
No, we haven't posted it yet.
Okay.
Yep.
You would be hiring somebody for that, or?
We would be hiring, and there is no new influxion of funds for this position. This is from the restructuring of the Unit B contract.
So this year we had how many curriculum coordinators?
The curriculum coordinators, four in the major subjects. So you had a science, a social studies, an ELA, and a math.
All full-time Unit B members, non-teaching.
Right, okay.
The restructuring of Unit B put these folks back into the classroom, as well as doing six through 12 curriculum alignment. So they're now teachers and also administrators. This broke up from 2015, when we approved four curriculum coordinators K to 12, full-time. So we restructured their job to go back to the chair people that we had prior to, so we could bring in somebody who specializes in elementary curriculum, which we found from our staff was needed desperately.
Thank you.
Chris?
Just stay on that topic. I know we're jumping, but I think this will help. So on the Elementary Curriculum Coordinator, is that a full-time, or is that, is that a full-time dedicated, or is that teaching?
Full-time, non-teaching.
Okay, thank you.
Judge, and Jeff, in this restructuring, it would be prudent to bring out the fact that some funding was saved?
Yes, correct. Correct, and that's, we're not adding any new money to this, because we were able to restructure or redevelop the Unit B contract, putting staff in the classroom. We were able to find money, or keep money, for that elementary. We wanted curriculum articulation pre-K to 12, with subject-area-specific people who are the aces. What we found from our staff is that the model that we had prior to wasn't as effective as our elementary folks wanted it to be. So we've reverted back to a model, and put the folks back in the classroom, leaving a salary for that elementary curriculum person. It's the same number that we would have had if we kept the same way this year, but I think the need, when we came on board, was listening to our staff in the elementaries, they needed curriculum support and help from somebody who was a specialist. Our folks did a great job, the folks that had been there before, but there was something missing, and we're hoping with this new, this new position of just breaking it apart, splitting these job descriptions will help us move our district forward. As I said, opening, you'll see some things different. Some things are the same, some things are different, but the cost factor is equitable from what we presented in the fall.
Well, I was a part of that Unit B negotiations, and I thought the way that that was streamlined and reorganized was very well done. So I would endorse the changes.
I have a motion in the second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor of accepting the Secondary Curriculum as written in your packet? All those in favor? Okay, the next one is...
The next one, the next one is the elementary counterpart to that. Again, this is a non-teaching role, so it was decided through our negotiations that that would be the Elementary Curriculum Coordinator. This is a non-teaching role, this job. Although the job description in essence was approved in 2015, we will be asking for the vote, so that we can re-establish that and post that position. This person will be responsible for streamlining and maintaining the elementary curriculum, working with myself, working with the principals, working with the teacher leaders, and then looking at it for more of a, although all, every subject every year is important, we would take it as, next year is a math implementation year, focus would be there, and then we'd move forward from there.
This is a Unit B position?
This is a Unit B position.
I'd enter, I'd entertain a motion to accept the Elementary Curriculum Coordinator as written in your packet.
So moved.
Second.
Discussions. Mr. Teague? Mr. Teague? Um, having been an elementary teacher for a number of years, a long, long time ago, I never really cared for the K twelve coordinators. It just got to be too cumbersome, I think, the way that it's been redesigned for a particular, strictly elementary person to coordinate the curriculum is a positive move. Michelle, we move to the vote. You think Mr. Trotter's trying to give his last words?
Yeah, man. He has more.
Any further discussions? All those in favor? Thank you. In the last one?
The last one that you'd be looking at is titled instructional education facilitator. This was originally approved, um, four twenty-six, two thousand. This was the, uh, job originally held by Donna LaBretton back in the day when computers and software and programs were just entering, um, the educational world. The goal of this position is so that we can have someone who supports students, supports staff, supports operations, and supports, uh, from an educational standpoint in the year two thousand, as we enter two thousand and twenty. What you have in front of you is the adapted and updated version of what was originally voted on in two thousand. This position will, has not been posted. This position we are confident in will come from our existing people in Unit A who are certified in instructional technology and those sections. This position would then come out of Unit A and it would be, um, a position that we have in the district. When we think about the new ma- Ready Math Program and the assessment calendar from a technol- technology standpoint, when we think about the piloting of the ELA program and the ability to diagnose students from a technology standpoint for reading, math, and ELA, this position in this day and age is needed. What would take place is that person, whoever was hired, if we found someone that was appropriate, um, we would reshuffle the deck and then that person would move out of the union in order to take this position. This position would be in order to assist our staff, our principals, our district in the form of PD, in the form of, um, what is out there for technology, what is out there for software, and then to also work with the elementary curriculum coordinator in order to impact the assessment calendar that kids need in this day and age.
The one thing that, um, we are lacking desperately in district is assistance on the IT schedule as far as acad- educational software. Our IT, our technology department is awesome, but we don't have somebody who's, who's, who's been a teacher or someone who can walk into a classroom and help the teacher work through software. This is existing, plus we've also cut all of our librarians in the elementary level. This person would help them as we develop our, our meccas of technology in our library as we move forward to a twenty-first century library.
I'd entertain a motion to accept as written in your packet for instructional education.
Second.
Second.
Discussion, drive, Mr. Cullen.
Is this kind of along the line of like a help desk position, coordinator-like?
No, no, this is, this is more of a person who's going to work with teachers individually with PD. One of the things, and, and now we've moved to MCAS two point oh on the basis of in a classroom, as this person will be responsible for putting forth the assessment schedule for the district. So it's not like, hey, I got a problem. You know, I'm not saying that if a teacher doesn't have a problem with an issue of software or their, their technology in a classroom, they contact the help desk, this person might go out and help them, but this is more on the proactive side, they're out in front.
Let me give you an example, uh, Josh Cutler was nice enough to get us that earmark, um, for the laptops that are, the Chromebooks that we received. So now elementary programs have at least six to eight lap pro, uh, Chromebooks per elementary classroom. The, not all of our teachers are very comfortable, some are, most are, but not all of our teachers are very comfortable, how do I now teach with this in a small group fashion in a room in this day and age? This person is adept at that, this person would be able to handle those pieces. When you talk about, are we staying with Google and the Google Suite and Google applications? We're looking for this person, if they're not already Google certified, to become Google certified, to have a system and a menu of when professional development can be given for staff. If we're looking at the science teacher who needs a quick assessment of what her students are doing, there are thousands of applications that are out there. When we go into our formalized program of I Ready, there is a clear assessment schedule that's built into that. Somebody needs to harness that. So principals, so teachers can deliver that product and then they can also use those results from the diagnostic tools. So this is a teacher, this is a tech ed position as opposed to a technology, software, help.
Mr. Boyce?
And I can actually echo all of that, George, because I knew Donna and I had the opportunity to work with her. Um, and it was just, it was like this, this is what we need. We definitely, it, it was, you know, she would come in on the classroom, she'd interact. Uh, for all the, um, so-called power of volunteer work I had done on Fridays, running around to different schools and helping in the computer lab, and even sometimes making those, uh, machines work by pulling our parts from here and there and who else knows where else, um, she was very, very effective, I thought, in coming in and, and being in the classroom and being available. You wish you could have more Donna's at the time, but, you know, and it, and it was huge. We had just started technology. I mean, that was a huge lift. So I had to say, thank you.
So, um, I know I've talked to you guys about this in the past, would this position within its scope look at, so the, the issue, the potential issues like with MCAS and all the standardized testing, kids literally have to be able to type responses, right? And that's a little bit of a challenge, so I watch my, you know, eight-year-olds do the one peck, one peck, and on a timed assessment, that's a challenge. So would this position look at in their scope, not necessarily the delivery per se directly them to the students, but as an example, would they look at something like, hey, maybe here's an application that we can help our, our staff understand and pull up? As, I'm not saying they need to do that specifically.
No, but they are, they are responsive to the needs of what it, what it's like with technology today. Classic case in point is that there are, there are people, um, if you have a student who doesn't type well, okay, Google has an extension which will allow for the translation of it. It's very difficult sometimes for a principal or for myself to say, man, I wish I had the time to go do that. Now, it's, it's almost like, hey, let's have this meeting, let's have, there'll be a regularly scheduled meetings with principals, with teacher leaders, with the elementary assessment coordinator, and saying, hey, what can I do to help? And then those things are helped upon. It's also the ability to have some in, in my world and in Jeff's world and I think in the world of leadership team, to have somebody who can now say, from an educational standpoint, this is new for teachers, this piece is out there for teachers, it's going to be a Tuesday at four thirty, if you can make it in the gourmet galley, we're going to have an hour of this. And it's just bringing how to teach easier, better, more efficient with the students we have nowadays, and it's, it's a helpful position from an educational, not a purely technical standpoint.
Question I haven't heard yet, financial impact?
There is none, because it's going to be taken from you, the, the, the existing piece from Unit A.
Thank you. Any further questions before we vote this? I have a motion in the second to accept the edu- instructional education facilitator as written in your packet. Any further question? All those in favor? unanimous, thank you very much. Okay, I'd entertain a motion to vote the school improvement plans?
We have people there that are more than.
Chomping at the bit.
Chomping at the bit to present, so, uh, elementary, Ms. Downey.
Do I have a motion in the second before we get, just one sec?
The move, second.
Thank you, okay. Karen, thank you.
Thanks, um, Karen Downey from the Conley School, speaking on behalf of our elementary principals, Darlene Foley from Dwell, Jill Cottrell from Indian Head. Um, as you know, we've been working off of our strategic plan for the last five years, extended through two thousand and twenty, um, and we're keeping with our pillars. So our first pillar is every child, every day, healthy minds and healthy bod- bodies. Um, our first, uh, focus area under their school impact is to implement a free full-day kindergarten program. I think you'll see that from kindergarten all the way to high school. We really truly believe that these, all of our kids need to start on a level playing field and that's where it starts. We also want to continue to develop and support the social emotional learning, a lot of the things that we're going to, you're going to hear from me and from my peers tonight, you've already heard around the table tonight, so that's, that's exciting for us to all be on the same page. Uh, we're going to expand our Excel team, we want to support counseling staff, the biggest piece at elementary level is to add full-time mental health specialists to, um, help our kids. We'll renew our responsive classroom practices and professional development and solidify programs in transitions from grade levels and between schools. Uh, pillar two, a cohesive pre-K to twelve system of teaching and learning, you've heard a lot about what we're doing tonight, we're really, really excited about a math program, um, coming in, so we will be working with our staff on professional development, we'll be talking about those grade level assessments and how we measure attainment of standards, so we're really excited about that. Uh, the second part of that is piloting literacy programs. We have teachers who are chomping at the bit to be a part of that, we've identified three programs to hopefully bring in and pilot, and we'll be looking for a protocol to evaluate those pilots and also looking again at level, at grade level assessments and how we, um, uh, measure attainment of standards. Uh, we'll work with that elementary curriculum director to create a calendar for regular and systemic curriculum review, grade level assessment windows, regular data review, and of course making sure that all the standards are met. And finally, pillar three, safe and secure schools. Uh, we want to develop a cyclical plan for implementation, practice, and review of safety protocols, not just for staff but for students, um, and then develop, execute, and, and, develop and execute effective plans, procedures, routines, and operational systems such as improving the audio communication in all of our gyms and cafeterias, improving the access to Chromebooks for all students, and finally, um, to work with operations to improve the climate in all of our buildings, whether that is through air conditioning or, um, uh, industrial fans in our cafeterias and our gyms. Anybody have any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Mike Graeble, I'm the, uh, principal at Whitman Middle School and I'm speaking for Bill and myself tonight, uh, at the middle schools. So again, sticking with, uh, our pillars, we have pillar one, every child, every day, healthy body, healthy minds. Um, we're in agreement with, with everybody up here that, um, we need a free full-day kindergarten that's only going to help all of us in the long run. Also, um, moving on, uh, continue to develop and support a social, uh, emotional learning and the needs of students in our schools working collaborative, collaboratively with the Excel team and network. We would love to continue to work and expand that Excel team because they've done a great job this year, our district team, in bringing ideas and, and, um, some of the castle competencies back to us in the buildings and we've tried to implement them throughout, uh, some of our curriculum and, and get that out there to not only the staff but the kids as well. Also, um, support our counseling staff because, you know, we've had a lot of social emotional issues this year and, and they've been inundated and, um, you know, we'd like to continue to s- to support them and educate them better. Professional development for staff, um, with the needs of, of some of the students that they're seeing in their classrooms and some of the needs they may have, involving social, uh, social emotional needs and some strategies to work with them better. We, like I said before, we've introduced some of the castle competencies such as self-awareness, social awareness, relationship skills, and that comes from the Excel team back to the buildings. Um, and, and I'd like to congratulate Lauren on her position, and also we've had a couple of conversations this year about bringing the Bright program to the middle schools, and I think that's important in the future, um, and that's something that I, I would like to continue to talk with her about moving forward. Under pillar two, uh, a cohesive pre-K to twelve system of teaching and learning, uh, at the middle schools next year, we're going to be changing our eighth grade social studies curriculum, um, we're going to be moving to a civics curriculum. It's, um, the state of Massachusetts is, is asking us to change that and it'll be more of a civics-based curriculum. Uh, also, we're continuing to develop grade level assessments and to measure, uh, the attainment of standards as well as meaningful engagement in the, in the, in the classroom Bill has grade five in his building, we don't have grade five in Whitman, but in, in, in grade five, um, like Karen said, they're going to be implementing, uh, a new fifth-grade math curriculum, providing staff with professional development, and, uh, they're also going to be piloting, uh, literacy program and providing staff with a protocol for evaluating the pilots. Under the pillar number three, safe and secure schools, we'd like to provide training for all relevant safety protocols, continue to do that and develop a cyclical plan for implementation, practice, and review of safety protocols. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Graeble? Greg?
Yeah, I know this used to be a, uh, elementary thing, but, uh, any plans for the middle school to teach cursive writing?
Not at this time.
Anyone else?
Fred, I will say that the literacy programs that are piloting, they all have a stop and end breaks.
They do. Okay, that's wonderful, because I can tell you how many people, that's one of the first things they.
I, I think of note, I think the, I think the clarification has to be made between handwriting and.
Cursive.
Cursive writing. Handwriting is what we have gotten, gotten away from in the, um, how you form your letters, how you make your letters, how you hold a pencil, and I think that's some of what, um, Karen is referring to. It doesn't necessarily, um, go to penmanship or cursive as we knew it as, as.
But a child will be able to read perhaps, uh, you know, a letter that's been written in cursive and sign their name as opposed to printing their name.
Yeah, I, I'm along the same way because I have complaints and I'm, I'm complaining about it because my son can't read cursive, so when we got a letter from somebody, we had a translator for him because it's like a foreign language. They don't know that, that has to be brought back into the school systems. All our, cluster, everything like that isn't written in cursive, you know, it's like, you're going to come up with kids that don't know how to read anything.
Alan?
Speaking from a banking perspective, I work in finance and it's amazing how many people do not know how to sign their name in cursive, and they have to on a contract, so we really need to bring that back.
Thank you, Mr. Graeble.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name's Chris Jones, I'm the principal here at the high school, and, um, I'll just run through the three pillars again. Uh, some of the stuff's the same, so I'm just going to kind of hit on the different things that, uh, that pop up. The first thing under pillar one that I really want to highlight is that we're going to be looking at developing and implementing a cohesive plan for, um, the offering of student services. That has to do with our counseling department. We're going to be looking at how we assign students to different adjustment counselors and look at entry and exit criteria for the Bright program, uh, to make sure that the students that need the services the most get them as equitable as possible. Uh, the next thing we're going to be doing is expanding mindfulness throughout the school. We're going to be bringing in therapy dogs on a more consistent basis, so it's not just a one-hit-and-done type of thing before tests or something like that, so the students become, um, more used to them and they become more useful to students on a regular basis. We're also going to be looking at the mindful minute and talk about doing some mindful minute mindfulness exercises before classes to get kids more ready to learn and, um, be able to access the curriculum mentally before we ask them to do the, the actual academic work after going through the day. The other thing that we're going to be looking at is, um, we're going to form a committee next year and examine the schedule and look at what we can do as far as the school get schedule goes to better service our students as we look at programmatic structures and changes. Um, that has everything to do with from the length of the blocks of classes, how the classes are structured, and start times. Um, we're going to see what we can come up with because we're interested in moving forward in establishing a stronger, more permanent internship program, um, a senior project-type program that would almost be like a capstone or ways that we can get students involved in the community in their senior year and their later years in high school. Under pillar two, the system of teaching and learning, um, one of the major things we're doing is we're starting a new program called Panther Pathways. If you follow us on Twitter, you'll see hashtag Panther Pathways. It has to do with vocational aspects. We're, yes, we're looking at college and career readiness, but, um, it's almost better to say career readiness, and some careers require college, some don't require college. The Panther Pathways is the culmination of a three-day training that I went to with a couple counselors and a teacher, um, and part of that whole aspect is the financial literacy course that we're putting in that we're piloting next year, looking at graduation requirement the following year. Um, this has to do with a program called My Cap offered through DESI, and it's a way students build a portfolio through interest inventories and things like that and job clusters that find out what they're really passionate about and what they're interested in and kind of helps direct them while building a resume for them throughout the college, the high school experience, so if they want to go to college, they're ready, if they want to go into the workforce, they're ready. Um, and it's a more informed decision. We're also, um, going to be looking at hopefully some creative ways to get the Chromebooks that we need that were cut, um, from this year. All our Chromebooks that we're going to get were cut during this budget cycle. The problem with that is often people see the Chromebooks as something that students use to type on in class, or maybe something cool or creative lesson. Not the case, they use them to Skype, they use them to run labs, they use them to do all kinds of different things, virtual tours, and the problem with cutting Chromebooks goes far beyond the, the, the physical aspect of the technology. Teachers will not plan technology-based lessons unless, and I can't blame them, unless they have access to technology. they have access to technology on a regular basis. And so by not having that equipment, we're actually hindering our teachers' progress to improve themselves and their craft. So that's something else we're going to be going after, and we're going to be looking at improving teacher professional development with in-house offerings. We've got plenty of experts here in the building, and we're going to go from use them to teach the other teachers. Good strategies are good strategies. And then finally, because I'm sure I've gone over my two-minute mark.
Yes.
I thought I was yielding my time.
Keep going.
And finally.
He's the closer, yeah.
We're actually looking at, we've added some delayed openings, and we're going to be expanding the number and structure and use of those delayed openings to offer better professional development for teachers. And I won't even go into safe and secure schools. It's basically the same thing everybody else said, practice with the new plan so that everybody gets used to it. I won't even ask if there's any questions. I've been told I'm not allowed to answer.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Jones? Mr. Boyce?
So I know, and it's the, having the kids come in late, and I forget where I saw it just recently, we have to focus more on that, having the older students, high school, maybe some middle, start later, and I know that you take advantage of it when you can, but making it a permanent thing, and, you know, we're in everything. Transportation, we can't even get the money for it, and I know it's based on all of that.
Potentially, that's a discussion, again, as far as a part of the operational override. There is a movement, there's a statewide movement with people to try to get the legislature to put a start, a set school time for middle and high school students. There was a petition that was out there the other day, but I do, we've talked about this at length with the committee, and parents out there have said, can you move it from 7:05? And I said, can you write me a check? Because everything is financially based.
We can move it, but you're going to lose teachers.
Yeah, we're, I mean, it's financially, it was a financially-based decision back in 2014 or 2013. The late starts have helped the high school, but I would look at start times across the board so we could, not only is the high school going early, but an elementary is going late, so there's no systematic converse, we can't do PD with our elementaries together because everybody's on a different start time. So if we start looking at that in the, in a fiscal year or for money in an override that could be sustainable, that could be another topic that we discuss.
Alan.
I just had a question about the internship program that you were talking about. I remember years ago when my sister was in high school, she took advantage of a program like that, working with a local dentist office in Abington, and she still works in that field today. She was able to go and take a, she internshipsed at this dentist office for a couple of years, actually, through high school, and then started working there, and she actually went and took an exam, so now she's a certified dentalist, didn't even have to go to college for it, but that's what started her on this, and it's a wonderful program. I would love to see something like that come back. It was great. That would really benefit a lot of our students, I think.
Mr. Jones.
Sir.
I'm sorry, you don't?
I'm good.
Before we go to Mr. Small, I have an idea. Seeing as this is Mr. Trotter's last night, I'll volunteer him to come to the school and do some teaching because he's
Don't, not on Fridays, though.
I don't want to let him slip away.
We need him at the
Does he come with the white Volvo?
Once a bright neck for heating times.
Yeah, yeah, well, absolutely, yeah.
This goes back to the busing issue, two things. Number one, I know we had a discussion last November in doing an analysis to see what it would look like if we brought it in-house, and I don't know where we may stand on that at this time.
We didn't, I haven't given that much thought. I wanted to get fiscal 20 in there, but you're talking just purchasing of equipment, millions and millions of dollars.
Well, yeah, I mean, but we're paying an awful lot of money now, so you do something of a lease or, you know, purchase, so you'd budget it out.
I would look at the committee to give me a recommendation to move forward on that. The Whitman FinCon made a comment. It wasn't discussed in a general meeting here, but that would be something that I'd ask the committee to say, you know, we'd like you to investigate and report out on that, because the, just looking at that, we don't have space, we don't have drivers, it's a process. And I know we talked about a contract. We have a contract for the next two years. If the committee wants me to investigate or have folks on our staff investigate a bus contractor purchasing our own buses, I'd be more than willing to do that. I did get wrapped up in the 2020 budget with all the numbers that were being floated around from the different towns and pushed the busing issue aside because we have a signed contract.
You just want to find out if Mike or Karen need more time to match Chris's, that's all.
They're good.
Yeah, we're getting, we've got you hanging up there. Any more questions for Mr. Jones? Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to get back to the bus thing in one second. Anyone have any questions before we vote acceptance of the improvement plan that you just had presented?
Can't go home yet.
Mr. Trotter.
Not that we want to prolong things, but this is, to me, the correlation of the old budget four-hour meeting. Instead of listening to like six people give their school improvement plans, it's much better when it's consolidated, so I like this method much better.
Anyone else on the school improvement plan? Questions? I have a motion and a second to accept as presented. All those in favor? Thank you. Okay, back to the bus thing. It's not really on the agenda for this evening.
Good night, thank you.
But I will make sure that it is on the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay.
For June.
Oh, for June.
For June.
Yeah, for June.
Not Monday, we are.
Monday, Susan. Whoever is in charge will put it up.
I don't know if it's fair to ask you to come up with this, but a cost analysis. I know originally we saved somewhere three, $350,000 was the number I was told by going to the later start times. If we go to
Earlier start times.
Earlier start times, I'm sorry. If we went to a later start time, obviously, it's going to cost us money, but I think that the numbers that I was given, it was based about a half a million bucks, 450 to 500,000, that was based upon 65% reimbursement rates.
That was a while ago.
At the time.
Correct.
So now if we're looking, and the tough part is you don't know year to year, but if we're looking at 85, 90% reimbursement rates.
Yep.
I mean, right now, they got 80 baked into the budget, which is, I think, an 8% increase from what we saw.
It is.
You know, if we end up 85, 90, 95, or
Absolutely.
You know, that's going to take that number and shrink it down quite a bit.
Correct.
Is it fair to ask you for June to have some of those scenarios?
I think that's fine. I think we can come up with that within the month.
How quickly could we implement something like that if we decided to go forward?
Change of thought that
That would be a full calendar year away, because parents already have daycare set up. So I would look at parents for school year 2021, if we were able to do that.
Which would coincide to the way Christine does reimbursement anyway. She's always a year behind.
So you're looking, you're looking at that and saying to a parent, hey, look, by the way, we're going to move Carly, Duval, and Indian Head all to the same time. I have parents that are already set up with their daycare providers, teachers as well. So I would look at, if we get something in place that's reasonable to start moving our start times around, I'd present that early in September, October of next year so that parents would have a full calendar year to prepare for it. I will say that there is a lot of conversation about getting the high school in at a later time. Most of the schools in our league, competition-wise, are at 8:00 or 8:15, and all our competitions start at 4:00. So kids are without, from 1:40 to 3:30-ish. It's worked. The library's never been as crowded, but we struggle with district-wide meetings for our staff because of the times, and anytime we try to do any implementation, like an Alice training or any type of speaker that we want everybody to hit, we're all over the place.
The other concern too is Duval lets out so late. I mean, wintertime, you've got kids going home in pitch black.
And the high school so early that you have kids coming in at pitch black.
Yep.
So I agree. So we'll put together some stuff for the next, we'll have it on the agenda the next meeting, we'll give you as much information as we can.
So can we just be clear? So for the next meeting, we're doing the cost analysis for later start times, and how much it would be to have our own busing fleet?
No, I don't think that
No, we're not going to
Okay, good.
We'll try to give you as much information on adapting our schedule with our current infrastructure.
But I, Mr. Hayes is going to have the busing on the next agenda.
I already talked to, I went over and told him to shelter remind us. Alan?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, we're straying a little bit.
Yeah.
Okay, home improvement plan. Okay, I have a field trip request.
Yes.
This is a very unique one. Indian Head School, fourth grade, June 7th to June 8th, they're having a sleepover. It's called Destination State School Fourth Grade Celebration. Approximately 111 students, four chaperones. They're asking for a school nurse because it's going to be on school property. It's called Calling All Night Owls. An entertaining motion.
So moved second.
Discussion.
Who's bringing the marshmallows?
Robbie.
I'm at a wedding that night, so I'm out.
I think Mr. Jones's daughter is going, you know, maybe.
Hearing no discussion, and I have a motion the second to accept. All those in favor?
Yeah, there's a feral on there too. As long as there's only one feral. Some tells me there's going to be two, though.
Where are we going?
See, atta boy.
The drive-by feral.
We get into doing subcommittee reports, and we'll be brief. Just important dates to remember, today was art and bloom here in the high school library. If you look around, there's a tremendous amount. I mean, yesterday, Saturday, May 18th, is the town elections in Whitman and Hanson. Monday, the 20th of May, school committee rearg meeting here in the library at 6:00. Friday, May 24th, Duval School has their We Remember Ceremony. They have it every year. Everyone on the committee is invited, and I believe all the Duval school parents and our local town officials. Monday, May 27th, is No School Memorial Day. There is a parade, I believe, in both towns this year. Is it, is the tri-town parade in Whitman going off this year? Is it in Abington? I know there's one in Hanson.
What do you got? Women's have a parade, I believe.
There's one in Whitman and one in Hanson. That's Memorial Day, the 27th. Thursday, May 23rd is the last day for seniors. I'm sure they're very happy. Wednesday, May 29th, is High School Scholarship Night. All are invited. It's at 6:00 PM right here in the Performing Arts Center. May 30th is Community Evening School Graduation, 6:00 PM in the Performing Arts Center. And May 31st, 2019, is High School Commencement, here in the gym. If you look in front of you, you all have parking passes, so if you need to use them, obviously, you park, have it with you so that the parking attendants will have an easier job getting you in and out of this parking lot. Also, you're still having the school committee meet in the superintendent's office.
Correct.
The 50th graduating class I know is coming. I've already been contacted by some of them, and I'm hearing rumors that there's going to be a record set for under two hours.
New principal, he's got it under control. I don't know. After he was
He says it, but I don't know.
Can we have a buzz?
We're going to start on time. We'll be there.
Those are the dates. Okay. Insurance Subcommittee. I've spoken to Christine. I know there's been some volunteers to be on that committee. Christine is at MasBo this week, Mass Association of School Business Officers, and when she gets back, she's going to compile all the information. I told her I want to do it because we want to get on it immediately, so expect to see that committee meeting within the next week to 10 days. So there's no report. Warrants Subcommittee? There's nothing to vote.
Just the warrants are signed tonight. They're all signed.
All set? Policy Subcommittee?
Has a meeting.
There was a policy in our packet.
So I believe the committee was addressed with an anonymous letter. It was sent to your emails, I'm not sure. But the reason the policy was in there, according to what we heard was this went out to all school committee members. That's what we heard.
Unless it was spam.
So I, we, it was signed anonymous, so to speak.
I got a request in there for like $2 million from some guy.
But that's why we included that policy as far as anonymous letters for the committee. But we had heard that there was something out there that they were sending it to the school committee.
In the policy picture was to let you know what policy we have on anonymous letters.
Right.
Yep.
Okay, so there's nothing new with the Policy Subcommittee. Facilities and capital improvement.
Haven't met.
Legislative update.
We talked about it earlier. You spoke about it early. The only other thing I'd like to add, and I ran this by Mr. Hayes, I was speaking with the Director of Local Mandates out of Suzanne Bump's office, Dr. Ben Tefoya, and between him and myself, asked him if he could perhaps explain to our committee some of the mandate rules and regulations. He volunteered to come out to our, to a meeting for us. I cleared this with the chair. We've sent an invitation to him for our June meeting. He'll be coming so that we can ask him questions and speak about mandates, et cetera, and perhaps get a clear picture, you know, of any appeal processes, et cetera, of what is applicable, what isn't applicable, and whatnot. He's a wealth of knowledge.
Is this going to cover the, for our waiver or whatever you want to call it on the mandates?
As far as that they're waived if they're prior to
No, if we, you know, there, people have been bouncing around, is, the mandates have been out there, probably been overridden 100 times, but to put a waiver in to not have to pay some of that.
Oh, the appeal?
The appeal.
He can cover that, you know, with us as well.
Because I don't know if that's, I mean, it's so
He's the director. You know, the problem is, he explained it to me, was anything that was before ed reform of '93 or Prop 2 and 1/2, if the mandate was there, it was grandfathered in and ended at that point in time. But he'll get into more.
For that June meeting, would you like me to invite our local
Yes.
Selectmen and FinCon members and
You're taking the words right out of
I'll do that on behalf of the school committee. I'll give that letter for you.
I'd ask you to do that already.
I have to say, on behalf of Fred, he has been keeping me in the loop. He has been on these politicians about the funding and on them and on them, and he's been keeping me in the loop, so we have been having discussions about legislative updates, so I just want everyone to know that's what's going on. Anything else, Fred? Everybody good? Pilgrimage area.
We didn't have a quorum on May 2nd. Fortunately, we have two meetings in June. We do have a budget still to present to the member school districts, and I do want to caution you, we are looking to purchase a building. Last, this past year, we got a little bit of money back.
We've got one in
On sale. I know, I know, we've already
What have we got to do?
We've already found one. We're interested in. I'll just leave it at that. But just, we cautioned that we may not have excess money that we'd be divvying up to the member towns, but we're doing everything in good faith and good understanding for everyone.
You have a question for Mr. Boyce?
I do. Real quick.
Oh.
What do you do if your meeting's on the night of a Bruins game?
Listen, everything's worked out so far. I'm worried about this fifth, sixth, or seventh. My next round ticket, this round was game one, is game seven. Everything has to come together around the fifth, sixth, or seventh. I mean, it's going to be like the perfect Stanley Cup storm in a sense. I don't know.
All right, are you all set?
Almost. Oh, can, one more thing?
Go ahead.
What was it? Mr. Small loves, it's been
Can I volunteer you for anything?
To volunteer me, and he has volunteered me for the dunk tank, and I did sign up. 10:00 to 10:30, what is, but I forget, it's at Indian Head, but what is the fundraiser? What is it? I call
The Family Fun Day.
It's the Family Fun Day.
Family Fun Day.
So I would invite my fellow school committee members.
What's the date? What's the date? 11?
I'm on vacation.
June 11th or something? We'll have a You know, because I want to come, and I want to, you know, hold out a bunch of dollar bills. I can't open up an email without, I've nominated Mr. Boyce for this.
We'll put some ice cubes in there to remind you of the polar plunge.
Thanks, I'd be at home.
Mr. O'Brien?
That's it.
Can I request a fire truck down there that day, in case I don't hit it?
You got it.
In case my arm is sore.
You got it. I might need it, too.
Can I just say a couple of quick words?